All right, here we go. Back. Let's go, people. Get it together.
Right here.
Calling the meeting to order. Welcome back, everybody. Happy fall. Recognitions. We're going to start with recognitions.
Yes, we have a special recognition ceremony.
All right.
So we have invited Lisa Abel, our 22, 23 Simsbury Teacher of the Year. For recognition. It's your 17th year as the band director at Simsbury High School. So Lisa has been with us a while and certainly had an incredible impact. But a couple of things I wanted to talk about quickly, and I won't take up too much time because I know this is painful for the people I talk about. Convocation this year was really a wonderful, wonderful experience. It was the best kickoff we have had since my time being involved in the district. And Lisa was a huge part of that from the start. We have a large hiring class that you'll hear about later when Neil does the personnel piece. And right away, we wanted to think about a different, more exciting way to introduce our new staff. So Lisa's thought was like she sent us some Chicago Bulls music from the 90s. And we're like, ooh, we can put Neil to work on this. And we really had a wonderful time with introducing our new staff as new team members with the spotlight to our own Mr. Sullivan announcing, who announces the Amherst football game.
Literally a second career for you.
High fives and a lot of excitement to kick off the school year. And that was kind of Lisa's initial thought when we sat down. The second piece-
Well done, Lisa. Start working on next year.
Was how she spoke to the faculty. And it really resonated and was an incredibly powerful, powerful message. So she talked about her platform and kind of her ideas for building community. And this year, as we work into the year, coming out of what has been a challenging couple of years for everybody is engagement, right? How do we really look at our practices, look at our interactions, and how can we do better in those areas? And Lisa talked about the power of being passionate, creating safe and fun spaces for kids. I love this one. You got to find your people, right? You got to find your people and collaborate and work with them and expand yourself, really push yourself. And it was a wonderful message. So I have to tell you, between Neil announcing and Lisa's speech, my in-between, people come, ah! But it was really a wonderful, wonderful day. And you've done incredible things. I am thrilled to hear you have also been nominated as a state semifinalist. So I know I'm coming over and we're going to talk later in the week. It's nice not only when your peers recognize you, but when other people in the profession see the great work you've done. So I just want to thank you. I couldn't be prouder and happier for what you've done. And thanks for coming out tonight in what I know is a busy, hectic couple of first weeks this school.
Thank you all so much. And it's so nice to see former and current band families involved in the board. And any of you have worked very closely with you and your children. And it's always nice to see all of you as well. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
And you don't have to stay the whole night.
Unless you have a little number they think. Did someone play you off? I know, right? That's what you should have done.
Thank you all so much.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for coming. All right, next we are on to public audience. From their seats.
We're going to use this microphone.
We use that microphone.
You can stand up or sit down. It's portable. It's not attached.
Okay. No? Anyone wish to speak at public audience? Seeing none, we are on to committee reports and Board of Ed communications. So I would like to welcome Emily? Emily? Emily, I want to make sure I'm saying it right. Welcome to the table. We're happy to have you with us. And you get to fill us in on whatever it is you have for us, with anything going on at the high school, how the opening was.
Sure. We did, I think, the first couple-
Her mic is off.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry. Maybe put it down a little closer to you, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. I think the first couple of weeks of school have gone really smoothly. I was involved in some of the orientation process for the freshmen coming in and the new students. And I think that went really smoothly. The freshmen seemed really confident, which I was really happy about. They seemed happy and excited. Everything, I know that the high school is starting to clamp down on like hallway expectations and everything, which I think has gone relatively smoothly. My senior colleagues are not super happy about this switch, but they'll figure it out, whatever. So I think overall, there's been a lot of like new improvements made like that. And I'm just trying to get back to normal because I know that in the previous years, the pandemic, it was a little bit of everyone kind of figuring it out as they go. And now we're kind of getting back into the swing of things, which I definitely see and is really nice, especially for senior year to kind of have like a go out with a bang type of thing. And I know that sports have been starting up and we already, we're in our spirit week this week. So I feel like it's a really optimistic and passionate environment this year so far.
I'm so glad to hear that. That's great. Thanks.
I have no committee reports, just good to be back in person.
Nice to see you.
After the summer, yep.
Hi, we did have a committee meeting of the Communications Committee.
Okay.
Which was your chair.
Yes.
It was excellent. It was in the summer and it was really great. And there's some really cool-
Some rain fog is looking.
There's some really great stuff that's happening. And Maggie, I'm sure will be telling us about that.
Yes, I do remember that meeting. Thank you, Tara, for-
On to Lydia.
I do remember. I was sitting over there. I do remember everything. And I do have the app, so I'm so excited now that I can just look at that. Okay, for me, just briefly, it was a busy summer for us at NSBA. We had a lot of summer leadership. Dr. Cardona spoke with us. Yes, Dr. Cardona spoke with us. So we had about 400. We were in San Antonio from around the country. So it was great to be in person again with all our colleagues from around the country. And our agenda's going forward because around the corner will be the congressional start date, which is early February. So we need to start planning now for that. In CAE, we also had summer leadership. We also talked about our legislative activities that are coming up. And we really never cease from doing any of this. It just continues and more so during the summer and during the fall. And the commissioner spoke, gave the message of the sky is not the limit. An astronaut had spoken to, and I know Matt was there with the superintendents, but she had come and spoke with King and spoke to us. And the astronaut had said, you know, the sky is not the limit because he's an astronaut. She's an astronaut in space. And so that was the commissioner's message, that, you know, our kids can do anything, be anything coming out of the COVID years. And we do, we are dealing with the, you know, the social, emotional, after COVID situation. So there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on the plate nationally, federally, statewide, and down to individual districts, not only here around the state, but around the country. So that's it. Cracked had a great convocation a few weeks ago. We opened, okay, we had no issues except for some transportation situations, but we kind of aired them, you know, got those straightened out. And next week, we start our first Cracked Board of Director meeting. So we'll have new members around the table. And I think the looming thing for all of us is elections, midterm elections are around the corner. And speaking to a lot of Boards of Eds and around the country is we're just concerned, this is not election year for Connecticut. We're in an off year, but around the country, that, you know, we're just hoping there isn't going to be a real tide of a change of Boards of Eds as we have seen in the past year. Not only Board of Ed members, but also superintendents. So these are things that we talk about besides, you know, teacher pipeline and subjects and things. It just rises up to all different levels. So these are some of the things that we've been concentrating on. We will even more so, and we will bring into DC and Hartford come winter.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Um, nothing. Happy to be back. Sorry, I just, I hate going after Lydia. She always wants to say nothing.
Say something else.
Let's let it rip. Welcome back. No, two things. I just wanted to echo something Emily said earlier as a parent of a freshman at the high school. And one of the things you guys are constantly hearing from me is my issue about transitions and our wanting us to do a little bit more deeper in that realm. And just want to say, my freshmen thought the orientation went great, was extremely helpful. And this is a kid who also was playing football. So he'd been exposed to the building for a couple of weeks anyways, but still thought that time was extremely well spent. So just kudos to everybody who helped put that on. Secondly, I owe Mrs. Seidel a public apology. On the very first day of school, picking up both of my sons, inadvertently parked in her spot. Exactly. Got a tongue lashing, exactly. I'm sure that the picture's on the superintendent's wall right now. So I started the year in the penalty box. I apologize, and it will never happen again. Exactly.
I love going after Jeff because I had to wait. I'm not welcome back, everyone.
Personnel negotiations?
Personnel negotiations has been meeting, going through the beginning of the negotiations with the teachers. And we also have a report later on on the custodians' contract.
Okay.
So we'll present that or-
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so, you know, the startup of some very important work for that committee.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Welcome back. More from me later. Okay. Mr. Sullivan.
All right, I wanted to be able to give the board a little update on where we are with Latimer Lane because that is an exciting thing we'll be talking about this year. And then three things in particular. The first is sort of the work that happened during the summer to get ready. Jason will speak a little more in depth about this later in the presentation tonight. But we did, while the town didn't see any construction because of where the process is, we did do some internal construction to separate out the stage from the blue gym at Latimer and create sort of a new classroom space that the gym is being used as. And then the library was emptied out to be divided and create two classrooms. So pretty significant amount of work to handle internally. But the good news is that in that planning now for when construction does begin, nobody's going to need to move. They are where they need to be for the rest of this school year. And then a few classrooms that have been emptied out will be taken offline in a couple of months. I know the board is, we had a couple of Zoom meetings over the summer to take some procedural votes that were approvals to like get us to the bid process. So I want to give you an update about where we are there. The first vote that you took was a Phase 1. We are calling this phase the early procurement phase, which is about some of the items that we know are very far out in the supply chain. So roofing materials, switch gears, the generator that's going to be needed to be in place when Phase 1 finishes, really have a lead time of almost a year out. So it was important to get a leg up on that. Those bids went out. They were reviewed over the past few weeks, and they were actually awarded last night by the Public Building Committee. So good, good initial news. It was about $2 million worth of bid packages. Based on the last budget, it was $2 million. And it came in about $200,000 under that 2 million. So good first start. Our construction manager says, don't do any victory laps yet.
Slowly.
But it was, it was definitely good initial news that a couple of packages went out and came back favorably. There was a delay at the state level getting the approval from the Office of School Construction at Grants and getting that next phase that you voted on in August. And we just got our letter to go to bid yesterday morning on that. So the bids went out this afternoon. Our construction manager was ready to go with the bids. And what I can give you as a rough timeline now, those bids will be out there for roughly four weeks. So we'll open them sort of right after Columbus Day weekend. They need another couple of weeks to reconcile with the bidders exactly what the scope is. And then what we're looking at is really sort of an early November timeframe, probably for a tri-board meeting to talk about where, as we all been talking about, when are we going to see the real number? And it'll really be that timeframe where we see how all of these bids come in. So a little bit longer to get to bidding than we hoped, but we've made a new timeline to kind of hold the public meetings that will need to be held and get to a referendum over the next few months, if a referendum were to be needed for an additional appropriation. So that's an update. You'll see the pictures of the little Latimer Lane construction later. No, you didn't put pictures?
They got pulled.
They got pulled. It's, we put up a wall.
I saw the wall because I was there setting up for the primer. I saw, the wall in the library was kind of exciting. It was really cool to see. It was good.
We have timeframes.
It was good. Thank you for that. That was, there's a lot there. Maggie, now, later?
No, she's good. She's later.
Okay, so then it's you, sir.
I am good. So I think we have a bunch of information to share after the motions about both some of the work of the summer.
Yep.
Some achievement results. Sue's office is going to report, Neil's, and then we have some good information, as you said, from both Maggie and Jason.
Okay.
So I'll let that, I'll let that play.
Okay. All right. It is some very serious rain out there. I hope your car windows are closed, everybody.
Hope your roof is closing.
My roof is closed, yes. Welcome back, everybody. Nice to see you all. And with that, we are on to recommended actions and the approval of the minutes of the August 15th special meeting. Can I get motions, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
All abstained.
Couple of extensions. Okay, motion carries. Personnel.
All right, I'm going to do these in bunches today. And the exhibit is obviously several pages long. It typically is when we look at this after the summer. We begin with the resignations that we received over the summer, and that's the first page of your exhibit. And we'll have the motion done with all of them. I just wanted to sort of characterize how these fell out. If I look at the resignations that you see, I broke them down this way. Four of the people are, were moving to a new district that was either their hometown and the school they're going to be teaching in has their kid in it, or is around the corner from them, or is much closer to where they live. We have some people who were sort of an hour away and landed a job closer to where they were. Two of them are people who were part-time employees here who achieved full-time work in other districts. So that's sometimes to be expected, that you may not be able to hold on to those people. And then three of the people are folks who just kind of took a step back and are taking a break from teaching right now after the last couple of years and resigned their positions. One of them, Dave Salonia, who's on your list, actually got an interesting job. He's sort of part teacher, part administrator at the Goodwin Early College program. And so he is, he had just gone for his administrative work a few years ago, pretty excited to land a position in something that's really up his alley in like the manufacturing world. So nice little promotion there, I guess, for Dave. So I need somebody to read the motion that is at the top of page two.
I'll read it. Move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Tisa Bowdoin, Brianna Cloud, Elise DiCarlos, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing the last names correctly, Janine Fawcett Nash, Erica Martino, effective June 30, 2022, Gregory Gallo and David Salonia, effective July 12, 2022, Mackenzie Mulville, effective July 29, 2022, Justin Farrell, effective August 9, 2022, and finally, Charlene Savino, effective August 23, 2022.
And a second to that, please. Any questions, discussion? Just our thanks for the years of service everyone gave us and best of luck in their new positions. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
In addition to those resignations, one retirement for you to accept tonight. Becky Rosenthal has been a teacher for 14 years at Henry James Memorial School after a career in the business world, right? And actually had a year off during the first full year of our COVID return and didn't want to finish her career that way. So came back for one more year last year in a really important role as a math interventionist, but Becky determined that it was time to retire. So she made that announcement to us over the summer. So the motion is there for your acceptance.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Rebecca Rosenthal, effective August 8, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you very much for your service. She touched a lot of kids and had a lot of impact. And I know that everyone appreciates it and enjoy your retirement.
Absolutely. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, first and passes.
And then one more on the notice of intent to retire. The clause in the teacher's contract that allows us, allows them to give us three years notice before their retirement and receive a small benefit for that. And Paul Smith, who is, was a math teacher for a long time, is now a technology education teacher. Paul made that transition several years ago, very happily. And he is, has been with us for 26 years, and we get him for three more, but need you to, I don't have a motion there. So you're moving to accept this effective-
His intent to retire?
Yeah, his intent to retire, effective June 30, 2025. Sorry, we missed the motion there.
Move that the Board of Education accept the intent to retire of Paul Smith, effective June 30, 2025. But I will say that he is an amazing teacher, and my daughter still loves math because she had him back in Henry James. And I can't say enough good things about him.
I'll second and say the same. He is dedicated to his students.
Absolutely.
Very few people we know were lucky.
I would echo that. Only knew him as a math teacher, but he was a stellar math teacher at Henry James. Absolutely.
I don't think that all has to go in the motion, but it could.
But we could. He would like it, maybe. All those in favor? Aye. With our great thanks.
And then these don't require your vote, but I want to draw them to your attention, that we are just about at the number 40 new hires for this year, which is more, you know, we've been closer to high 20s in the last few years, so more than. But part of that is because you added several positions in your budget when we had not done, you know, the special ed and social workers and a number of those positions were added. Over the, my report in a moment will show you that we also, due to class size, had to add three teachers at the elementary over the course of the summer. And then replacing these resignations kind of is the, is the rest of it. So, you know, again, they were robustly introduced to the faculty.
I strongly recommend watching it if you have not. It is a treat.
I'll have a little more information about kind of their years of experience and degrees when I do the opening report. So welcome to a fabulous incoming class of new teachers. It seems very exciting.
Very exciting to have so many new people in district. That's great. Approval of collective bargaining unit agreement.
All right, I'm on a roll here.
You are.
This was a negotiation that happened in the spring. And we began in March, I think exchanged proposals in April, and were looking to, looking to settle this before their contract ran out on July 1. The negotiations were slowed down a bit. We entered into mediation with this group, which is not something we've typically done with this group. So I actually want to thank Todd Bjurk as the Chair of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, who came and mediated with Sue and I for a day and helped get, we didn't quite get it done that day, but we got within inches. And then we finished over the course of the next couple of weeks. So what, the ratification of this took the membership a while over the course of the summer to bring people together. So they just ratified their, the tentative agreement a few weeks ago. And I was waiting for this first meeting to be able to bring this to you. So three-year agreement, as would typically happen. And you can see that the general wage increase was 2.8% in each of the three years. We are seeing the trend that general wage increases are inching up. They're a little bit higher right now due to the economy and inflation and settlements that are coming in in other places. So, you know, we had, when we had our nurses at 2.75 last year, that was considered a higher settlement, but that's becoming closer to average for these non-certified groups. So this settlement at 2.8% in each of the three years is within acceptable range. TV people. On TV, they probably couldn't hear that thunder, but there's a big thunderstorm going.
That was quite loud.
The, on insurance, there were not, there were not major changes on insurance, although one of the things that the people who are on the negotiations committee will know is that this notion of a specialty pharmacy as a way to help slow down rising pharmacy costs is an important ask that we've had, and we got that with this group this time. And that, in addition, that the, their contribution to the premium went up half a percent in each year. Regarding some leave changes, we have settled with our groups now in terms of leave that they can use in case there's significant illness in their own family, that they can use up to 15 of their own sick days. That's kind of a number we've settled at with each of the groups now. It's one of the things we look for is consistency between the groups, and that is where we are now. And they asked for consideration, their, their schedule is the same as the, sort of each building has a head custodian and a full-year secretary. So they asked for consideration that secretaries, that they would have the same vacation amount as the secretaries. And we agreed to that over the course of these. There were some clerical changes that needed to happen, and otherwise it was a good negotiation. Because we're not approving it until September, we weren't able to grant them the raise that they'll be getting. So there will be a retroactive pay that's going to have to happen with this. But we're pleased to have finally reached the point where we can approve this.
Great. Thank you. Motion, please.
I think Todd should do the others.
I'll move that the Board of Education ratified the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the National Association of Governmental Employees, Local R 1-260, for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I want to thank Neil and Sue and everybody who spent a lot of time working on this and the NACE representatives as well. It was a lot of work, and I think we came out with a nice outcome for everybody.
Yes.
So thank you to everybody.
Thank you all. Long, long summer for you, Neil. Thank you. All those in, we have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you all. Acceptance of gift from the Simsbury Gridiron Club.
Great, there's two gifts for your consideration tonight. First one is from the Simsbury Gridiron Club for $15,950. The gift will be used to purchase a sizable storage container for athletic equipment to level where the, the location where the storage container will be placed and to provide drainage for the area. So a very generous gift from the Simsbury Gridiron Club. And there is a motion there for your consideration.
Where will it be placed?
That is being worked out because some of the initial location was located in the floodplain. So that's part of working out the location.
Do they know yet, Jason?
Still working.
Still working on it? Okay.
But this is a permanent structure or a movable container?
It's like you'd see on the back of a semi-truck, so movable to an extent.
Right. But it will be somewhat hidden, right? I mean, it's not going to be like, as you walk, you're not going to walk by it, are you? It's not attractive.
No. As I say, we're trying to find an inconspicuous location for it. There are several of them actually on the property now, most of which you don't see at all. So we are-
I wouldn't say don't see at all. I wouldn't say don't see at all.
Thinking the ones by the tennis courts? Is that what we're talking about? More of those?
Yes.
And are these shared by the whole athletic department or specifically football?
Football. This is football.
I believe that's football.
Okay.
But football is probably in some of the other containers, and we'll open up space for...
Right.
So it'll all probably balance out, I assume.
That's what we're hoping.
Okay. Sounds like, yeah. I need a motion, somebody.
I'll move that the proposed gift of $15,950 from the Gridiron Club be approved.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much to the Gridiron Club.
Very generous.
The second gift is from the Girls Soccer Booster Club. It's in the amount of $2,165 for the purchase of a VAO camera, tripod, team subscription, travel case, all the goods, so that they can tape practices and games and provide tape coverage and feedback.
That's great.
And there's also a motion there for your consideration.
I move that the proposed gift of $2,165 for the Girls Soccer Booster Club be approved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Very generous.
A thank you to everybody who contributed. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. And now we are on to the opening report.
All right. So as we had kind of talked about, a very successful kickoff to the school year and much more normal feeling, right? I talked to Emily when she came in even about the summer. I mean, there is a sense of normalcy. We're back to a regular schedule of how we kind of transition and open up. So with this report, you're going to hear from the Office of Teaching and Learning a little bit about the work we did over the summer and what some of the focus points are for the school year. We don't get into great depth in this report because, as you'll remember, how we follow this up is with individual school reports. So everything that you see kind of at that balcony view tonight in this report, you'll see in finer grain when we have individual principals reporting out to you later on in the fall. We have some achievement data to share tonight that we were really encouraged by and a little bit of overview of the survey data that we did as well at the end of the year, which I think is important. Neil will talk about some of the work in operations and personnel, as he mentioned. Jason always has the great pictures of some of the capital projects. And we're really excited about this theme of engagement and things we're doing differently this year. And that also involves our communication platform. So we brought Maggie here to talk about that a little bit, the new app and some of the things we're doing. So.
Terrific.
Here we go.
Teed you all up.
Thank you, sir. Office of Teaching and Learning. So as has become customary, we really engage our administrators to look at our strategic plan and begin their school planning efforts through the prioritization of certain aspects of our strategic plan. So this graphic shows the three overall goals. One of student performance and success. The second around culture and climate. And the third around our premier workforce. And those notations under each one of those goal areas is all about the highlights from our office, ways in which we will focus on the teaching and learning. And across all goals, providing people what they need in an equitable way so that they can have access to the great teaching and the program offerings and all of the experience that the Simsbury Public Schools offers as we reengage our students, our staff, our families, and the community in what we have to offer here in Simsbury. So just want to give you a little bit first on the professional development. So once again, thank you for approving those early release days, that first week of school. They are put to extremely good use. It's a great way to on-ramp students, to get our muscles back in gear for those full days. But once those students leave for the day, our teachers and staff are engaging in very relevant professional development. So engagement was definitely the focus that first week of school. Again, PD aligned with the strategic plan priorities and specific school information and data. There was sessions on social emotional learning with the focus. You've heard me talk at length about the five competencies. And it makes sense to start off the school year with our focus on relationships. So as we reengage students and invite them back, hopefully to some of those pre-pandemic conditions and environments, how do we put a focus on building positive rapport and relationships with our kids? So that was a huge focus. We also looked very closely at student data and how they did. As Matt shared, I will have some performance data to share with you. And teachers also worked on their professional growth plans. So based upon how my students did last year and who I will have in front of me this year, what is it in my own professional learning that I want to focus on, receive feedback on, and do better for and with kids? So that gives you a glimpse of around what we discussed and engaged in during that professional development time. So on to some student learning data. Just as a reminder, we have standardized assessments that are given in the spring for grades three through eight and then 11. So we have Smarter Balanced Assessment, SBA, no longer called SBAC, SBA, grades three through eight, and then the Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS. Those are administered in grades five, eight, and 11. And finally, we use the SAT as the standardized measure in grade 11. So let's see how we did. SBA, really excited. You see two breakdowns there. One are the grades three through six at the elementary level and the other in grades seven and eight at the middle school. So I provided the number of districts for our DURG that had actual student performance rankings and how we fared. So you can see those rankings there, both in ELA and math for both the elementary schools. Again, those are all five elementary schools pulled together, as well as our middle school. So some things to note. We are starting to see that gap begin to close with English Language Arts and Math at the elementary, which is fantastic. We're still seeing an actualized gap in performance. Again, this is the same cohort of kids at the middle school. And we're using that information to plan for this year's area of focus that Mr. Baker will delve deeper into during Henry James's school-based report. Of particular note, grade four across the district particularly strong, number two in both English Language Arts and Math across our DURG. So some great results. I think this shows our efforts that we placed into the instructional focus, particularly in math. We're certainly not done yet, but we're starting to see the yield of those efforts. So really excited about that.
The gap is closing because the math is going up.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I mean, what you would see in this profile before, Todd, is you know, even when you kind of list out the districts, you would see always strong performance in ELA.
Right.
A three or a four, and you'd see like an eight or a nine in the math. So it's the first time we've kind of paralleled that way.
I just don't want people to think that the gap is closing because ELA is coming down.
Right.
I mean, the math is coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I got you.
And you can see that in the overall rankings there.
Yeah. That's great. That's great news.
Next Generation Science Standards continues to be great news. Certainly, again, we have some work to do in grade five. We have a DURG rank of 15. We're also not surprised in that. So during the pandemic, we really kind of pulled back on our science units, quite frankly, to go deeper into math and ELA. And we're bringing back those curricular areas of focus. So we're looking to see some improvement there. But check out grades eight and 11. So eight, we're at the top of our DURG in DURG B. And grade 11, not only number one in our DURG, we are number one in the state. We outranked any other district in our science performance. We are thrilled about this. I think this certainly speaks to some of the curriculum work that has been done, the outstanding instruction, and students buying into that instruction. So really happy there with science.
That's a great accomplishment.
Yeah, that's great.
Very, very, very good.
Number one in the state.
Number one in the state.
So the 15 is...
We've been watching science grow throughout the last few years because it has taken on its life of its own. Yes, we need to see us grow.
Yes, it really is. So...
15 out of how many?
15 out of 20, I believe, in grade five.
Okay, thanks.
So the SAT, we're also garnered some really nice results there. So in a DURG rank of 14 schools, our ELA ranked two, our math, three. What I want to note with the math is that the difference between that rank three and that rank one is 0.3 of a percent. So a very...
Spreads are pretty tight.
Very, very small gap, and we are thrilled with those results. You start to see the spread widen certainly past, I would say, the DURG that's ranked... Or I'm sorry, the district that's ranked fifth in the DURG. But we are so excited to see those results as well.
I'm sorry. Why are there... They're all DURG B rankings, but sometimes there's 20, sometimes there's 19, sometimes there's 15.
I think some of them are based upon regional schools, certainly. So you start to see a couple of districts not having enough reporting data to kind of queue up as a significant in that DURG.
Okay.
Sue, remind me, how many year... Is this only the second year we use in the SAT for the standardized test?
No, it's longer than that.
Longer than that? In my head, it's only the second year.
No, it's much longer than that. I'm trying to remember when we switched from...
When did we stop the CAP?
Five years, I think.
Because my kids all took CAP.
I want to say even longer than that.
I think my kids took...
Maybe May that started?
It's been a while. I'll get that.
It's been a while. I was just curious when the change went. I can't remember.
Have to think through that.
Okay.
So that's our student performance results on those standardized measures. Again, a little more detail will be received at those school-based reports, but we were very happy with our student performance. So congratulations certainly to the teachers and the leaders, but also to the kids because they knocked it out of the park.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Emily?
Emily, take some...
You were junior. Nice job. Oh, yeah. Actually, you were junior.
Own that data. Own that data.
She's like, stop talking.
She left. Nice job.
So on to our climate surveys. So you'll recall that it was important for us to garner some information around culture and climate in the spring. And some other districts decided not to do that. We decided to do that. Some may question whether that was a good decision or not, kind of tailing at the end of the pandemic. But again, we use our survey information as a way to look at a current state as one data measure and to be able to plan and to get better within for kids. So the survey centered on engagement. As a reminder, there were questions that were presented in that Likert scale, that one through five ranking from strongly disagree to strongly agree. We also had some free response questions in there as well. As a reminder, who was surveyed? We surveyed students in grades five, seven, and 11. We sent the survey out to all families in Simsbury, as well as all certified and non-certified staff. So in this next slide, it gives you an idea of responses. And as a reminder, we typically look to above 23, 25% as being statistically significant and helpful. And we definitely hit that mark and that measure in all of our populations. So we had a much higher response rate from our families as compared to our 2017 survey. So we're confident that this gives us a good indicator of those measures of engagement. So there are three specific questions or topics that I want to provide an overview of. The first had to do with school fit. And this was information that we garnered from our families. So on the left, you'll see any questions associated with the measure of school fit. And you'll see that from the family responses overwhelmingly favorable at 74%. We did have some neutral responses, but we were really happy with families' responses that we are preparing their kids for that next academic year or that next academic phase.
Did you, from here, did you go further down? Was it particular schools or any of those addressed? Like, did all 8% come from one school?
No, all 8% didn't come from one school. There were smatterings from all different schools. And it was great because we were able to give some of that very timely feedback to principals to use for their planning purposes.
So on the non-favorable, there's 8%. Is there any like measurable outcome from those that said non-favorable? The reason why? Can you delve into that to find out? I would just be curious to see why they...
Yeah, I think quite honestly, you might garner some of that from some of the free response questions. It's a lot of data to go through. So we're looking for themes, and we're looking for themes by school. So there may be some kind of topics that we want to delve further into, things that principals might be acknowledging through opportunities for parents or dialogue or open house evenings that we can start getting to that.
Yeah, that's good.
But we should get some of this through our school reports too, right? Because each of the principals was giving back this information.
That's correct.
So we can dig in.
And they'll speak by that specific by school. Yeah. Tonight's purpose was certainly just to give an overview. The second was around culture and climate. And you can see, again, there were predominantly four questions that led into perceptions of overall social and learning climate at the school in grades five, seven, and 11. And again, these were favorable responses. What I didn't do for this slide is add all of the neutral responses. So the kids are like, eh, it's not bad, it's not good, it's just, right? And there you see a huge climb in those responses. But it asked students questions around general climate, about fairness of rules. So that's always an interesting take from students. How much do other students' behavior help or hurt kind of the overall climate? And are teachers excited about teaching your classes? So there were, again, those four questions that led to those perceptions. Again, we're unpacking that a little bit more and looking for themes. And what you'll also see in these school reports is how individual school teams are taking this data and then saying, okay, we're going to use this to launch some of our priorities and improvement efforts.
Definitely particular... Can't wait for the high schools one. Yeah, because that's... 37% is not great.
Well, I think some of what you've already heard around Emily's reports around kind of tightening up some protocols, right? And having...
But the tightening of the protocols for that same group, because this is the survey, it's the same group of kids, is a further negative. And so that's why I'd be interested in how they're fixing that.
Well, I'll add a bit as a recovering high school principal.
Yes.
That any climate data that's ever been done in schools is going to go higher to lower from elementary to middle to high.
Well, because they have more opinions.
That's always the case. So...
And 11 graders tend to be harsh judges.
Whether it's an urban district, a rural district, suburban...
Well, they have more opinions, and elementary kids are elementary.
So...
We're all off for this too, Jen. The other way that you can look at it is, were there specific comments around behavior in the hallways? So that detract from the learning climate. So now we're going to tighten up the hallways. And then maybe we'll see an increase in people's perceptions around, yeah, the hallways feel better. You know, so it can also work that way too. But certainly more by each individual school as they look into their results. And then finally, the premier workforce. Questions around staff feeling, valued members of the school community. Again, kind of the questions to your left around how well do your colleagues understand you as a person? Connectivity, respect in between? How much do you matter? How much do you feel like you belong? And I think this is where we may have seen some effects of the pandemic too, right? And the difficulty in making some of the connections. Again, I will assure you that principals are utilizing this data, working with their teams of teachers and leaders and using it for planning purposes. So what do we want to do that about that? And how in some of these areas do we want to increase the favorable responses that teachers and students would provide at each individual school?
It's kind of surprising to me that only 62% of the staff responded. That seems low.
No, that's that what that says...
No, I flipped back, yeah. I flipped back. I wonder what these numbers would have...
You flip back to the table here.
Would have looked like.
I think, Todd, in retrospect too, we were a little challenged by the...
I think Todd, in retrospect too, we were a little challenged by the time of the year. We did this, was it the last two weeks?
Yeah, the last three weeks of school.
Last three weeks of school. Yeah. So I think the cycle is something to think about again as we move forward, because this is something we should do on an annual basis of what is the time to do this.
I feel like of everybody, they should be very invested in getting this, this answered. And what makes me nervous is that, back to this slide, those numbers seem low. Like, what would they be if people just didn't bother taking the time to answer the survey? Would they have gone down? So that scares me a little bit.
Yeah.
Again, what I didn't add also here is the neutral responses. And to Matt's point, last year was a long year, right? And at the end, when we were asking people these questions, they were tired. And that, again, it's not to make excuses about the data, it's to provide some context and to say, what next? So if this is where people left off in this year, as we look to reengage, again, the survey was around engagement, how do we reengage our staff, our students, and our families to do better? And at the end of the day, to feel better about those results. But your, your points are certainly well taken.
And maybe to that point, you, like you said, the timing of the survey, you move it up in the year so that it's not at the tail end when they're being crunched by everything else that's going on.
Yeah.
You know, that might get us a better response rate, at least for this day.
Or after Christmas break or something.
Or, or spring break.
So again, some overview of both student performance and the culture and climate data and more to come. So the first report that will be given on the 27th is the high school report. And that team is already gearing up and will be excited to share some of their individual results as well.
Great.
When are the ESBA results going out to actual families?
Within the next week. All of those papers, those letters. No, no, I mean, there was a, it was a delay in getting that information from the state. They had just come in and after opening. So those are in principals' hands and are getting ready for distribution.
It was a very unusual timeline with initial results kind of came out and you could access your own district with no comparatives. We've never had that before, that I recall. That came out pretty recently.
Very much later.
So different, I don't know the real reasons behind the delay.
And they're encouraging districts to not really utilize the results from last year, which is interesting, and to do the comparison more from that 18, 19 school year.
They actually created a statewide dashboard and they wiped that year out.
They wiped the year out.
You're talking about State Department of Education.
Yes.
So they wiped out 19, 20?
Well, there was no 19, 20 data.
Right, I'm sorry. So they wiped out 20, 21. Interesting.
So you're back, right.
I mean, we have the data, you know, we can, we can look at that, but it's just an interesting way that they are.
They don't want to use that here.
Showing that as a state, yeah.
Interesting.
So it's very interesting.
When the schools do their, their, tell us about what's going on.
Their school report.
Their report. Yes, couldn't think of that word. Will you, will they include some comparative? Like, I would be interested in these numbers and how they do compare to, even if they go back to 18, 19. Like, I know you're saying, oh, they're fourth, but what does it look like? You know?
We can do a three to five year look back for sure.
Just to see.
For sure.
But it would, I'm trying to think, like, with the change in the math curriculum, K8 and the coaches and all of that, it'd be interesting to see.
It's been a few years.
It's been, right. Few years in a pandemic, yeah. But that's what I'm wondering, like, it would be, it would be interesting to see.
Like, that 56.6%, how did that compare to pre-pandemic?
Right.
Not well.
No, it didn't.
I mean, we were struggling a little bit at the middle school right before the pandemic, but, and the middle school scores overall in the state are much lower than the elementary and the high school. But, you know, we certainly have worked.
And the science, like fifth grade science, like, what happened there? Like.
Well, as I said.
It's time and focus. You know, we really focused on pulling those intervention programs back together, really focused on literacy, been talking about math for years, wanted to make sure, so science was almost on an alt schedule. So it's really, it can be almost an instructional minutes thing as well when we look at it.
And they're kind of just starting in fifth grade. So it's like, they don't have any foundation, the foundation isn't as significant as when you're in 11th grade, when you've been taking science.
I'm just curious, because historically, I would imagine that number was not that low.
No, exactly.
It wasn't, but again, it's where we decided to concentrate our time, our focus with kids. And it was in that ELA area and that math area. So we are bringing those units back with a very kind of focused alignment vertically. That was one of the things our teams worked on. And again, we're seeing those results in eighth grade and in 11th grade. So certainly more to come on that.
Yeah, I think we also had some of those challenges of kids who hadn't been in school because they did distance learning. Like, there were so many factors last year that really went into all of this.
Fifth grade was obviously the weakest link on that.
And again, with State Department of Education, even though the commissioner gave, you know, the rah rah speech about starting school, they're still down in personnel and staff. It is just, this is really not a good thing for the State Department of Education. So, you know, there are positions that have not been filled, that have been vacant for so long, that have not been filled, and we don't know if they're ever going to be filled.
At the, at the State Department?
Yeah, yes, State Department of Education, yeah. They're just positions that unfortunately just have not been filled. So for a number of reasons. But you mentioned the dashboard, that dashboard in State of Connecticut, State Department of Education, there's a dashboard for anyone that can go see it. It's really, it's very interesting. If you haven't seen it, take a look at it because Gugugugubobian, I'm sorry for pronouncing his name, but, but he is the one that really touts that dashboard and about what's in it. And the material that's in it is just, it's very interesting.
And that's the dashboard they wiped out that year on.
From a comparative standpoint.
From a comparative standpoint.
The other information is on, it's also comparison with other districts, you know, from year to year. So it really is, it really just breaks it down just so much.
It does. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And over to Maggie. So as Tara had shared before, and Lydia had shared before, a great communications meeting over the summer. And Maggie wants to share with you some of the outcomes of that work.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Excited to kick off the school year with some updates in our communication platform. So just to give some quick background, we're making some changes really around this theme of engagement. And last year, we had a situation where our website went down, which also brought our email down. And it gave us a chance to pause and kind of look at what our platform involved. And also to take a look at how we want to communicate, what are some new and up-to-date ways that we could reach families in a better and more consistent way? So what we found is that we have School Messenger, which is a.
I thought you were going to tell the story of our meeting when the website went down. No?
It was a little bit stressful. Mr. Curtis was wanting up to date on whether it was back. It was a little intense. But it did, it was, it was unfortunate but fortunate. It pushed us to look at what other districts are doing and how we can really reach our families. And we came up with a more robust all-in-one platform. And what this platform has allowed us to do is to bring to families the District Custom Mobile App, which is available in the Apple and Google Play stores. Anybody can have that. And then we've got the ability to text message families for emergencies. So we'll use that this year for our snow days. And then we also have a teacher communication app, Teachers and Coaches. We've done a lot of training this year in a very safe way that doesn't allow someone who's not in our Simsbury Public School bubble of Power School to be able to engage in that communication back. So there's a bit of a security piece that also came with these additional new features. So for a quick overview, this right here is a screenshot of our custom mobile app. And again, you can download that from the Apple and Google Play Store under Simsbury Public Schools. It's nice because the calendar feature, you can turn on the radio buttons of the schools in which your children attend, and you get the calendar updates for just those schools. So we're working really hard to make sure that those are up to date as you're, you know, around town or standing someplace, that you can get a quick update on what's going on in your child's school. It also gives you the quick access to things that you use on a regular basis, such as Power School, My Payments Plus, that's how you pay for your lunches and AP classes and pay-to-play sports. It's all done through the platform of My Payments Plus. We also included the CIAC calendar in hopes that folks around, you know, the town would maybe be able to attend a game. So all of the events for our athletics come through that CIAC calendar. And then we also have our Henry James and SHS Daily Messages. So instead of getting an email, parents can just go right on the app, go to the icon that says HJ Daily Messages, and they actually have the daily message for each day of the week. So if you missed a message here or there, you can get that catch-up real quick. So, so far, so good with that. I highlighted a little bit with the text messaging. We did do a big push on Friday, September 2nd, where we pushed out to families and opt in to get the emergency text messages. It's not the only way that you can do it. So if you didn't receive that text message, you can still opt in. We had over 3,000 people opt in the day that it went out. I was actually watching it in live time. The parents who put a Y in the box and said, yes, I'd like to know if there's going to be an emergency, you know, via text message through the Simsbury Public School. So again, we've got these flyers up in the schools. We had them there for meet and greets. We also had them for open house. And we'll send them out again to let families know that they can always be, you know, opting in when they feel the time is right for them. And the last piece was our School Messenger app. Spent time on those half-days, as we talked about at the beginning of the year. It was optional professional development for teachers to attend. I did training for all of the schools. And I also did coaches' training to teach them how to use this map that functions very much like Remind or even Game Changer. If your child has had an athletic experience where they've used that platform, it can be single or two-way communication. And it's really nice because it is available on a mobile device, but it's also available on the web. And because we give this opportunity for our students in ninth through 12th grade to, their teachers may ask them to join, they can use their Chromebooks. So we know that it's a guaranteed experience for everybody. If they don't have a mobile device, they can access it. It's actually in our Simsbury Schools bookmark, and they can go right on their Chromebook and get those same messages. It's an optional communication piece because many of our teachers are using Power School or Google Classroom or traditional email, and that's functioning. So just to bring attention that this was an optional piece if, if folks needed that two-way communication in more of a text message format. If you've downloaded it as a parent, you also know that you get the broadcasts. Like, if, you know, a message comes from Matt's office or your principal's office, it also does come on the app as well, which is a nice way that you also have those features for you at your fingertips in case, you know, keeping up with your personal emails is challenging as it is for me. So very excited about these beginning pieces and, you know, we'll continue. I'm actually going to the PTO meetings, so I start tomorrow night at Central Schools' PTO meetings to just share a little bit with families and, and offer them some help.
That's terrific.
That's a great idea.
Do you think this ultimately replaces the use of the website a lot?
No, I think it will be a companion. I think we'll continue to use our website because our teachers' websites, you know, individual content area websites are there. But, and I actually, with the athletics app, icon on the app, it pushes you right back to the website. I think it'll streamline for folks where they need to go. The nutrition service page is on here. It streamlines them right to the website. So it'll be a companion.
Years ago, we had to go through like an ADA compliance on the website. Does this have to comply also or?
Differently through the App Store. We had to do a lot of different things through Apple and Google Play for approval. So a little bit different, not necessarily with the ADA compliance. But yeah, and we did highlight on the website, under the district page where it says Communications, we did a night, you know, full piece on how we're going to communicate so that families that are new to the district know how that's going to happen.
You're right. I'm glad you mentioned that because when I downloaded it, the only way for me to get to the real website, I had to go to athletics.
That's the only one that's a direct link there.
Right.
For right now. Nutrition Services is as well.
Oh, okay, all right. I just want.
The nice piece on it too is it's flexible. So when we get to the time of the drama production, we can actually put an icon on there and want to buy your tickets. You can do it right there. So we have the ability to change out those icons and move it around. So I'm interested to know what families, as we gather some feedback, what they'd like to have at their fingertips. So this is a starting point.
That's great. You're going to be at the meetings to hear, hear from people. Yeah.
What's the school board icon linked to?
I was just looking at that myself.
That one I think we took off. That was in the first iteration and we deleted that.
We like it when it links to Todd's picture.
Todd in my, or it's Jeff in my parking spot, isn't it?
It is the school board hall of shame.
Five minutes after I parked there.
I was going to ask you, are you getting data from the App Store that tells you what part of the app people are using? Are you going to get that feedback?
Yes.
So that we can maybe tweak as we go?
That, yes. We're not only getting data from the app, but we're also getting it from our new email communications that go out through School Messenger to families. We can tell what they've clicked on and what links have been helpful. So yes, we're going to be coming upon the end of the month, we're actually having our next training session to take a look at the analytics that we'll now have collected for the first month of actual use.
Great.
So.
Emily, do you have it?
It's great.
You don't have it?
I was just, I was just thinking as she was talking, because there was the banner as we came into forms and photo that says, get the app. And my friends and I were all like, there's an app? That's, okay. And then, yeah, and then exactly.
So maybe we need somebody in the classrooms talking to the kids a little bit about it too.
Yes, they can. Have you had to download the actual School Messenger app at all for any of your classes?
No, although I talked to one of my friends about it today. She opened it, she was like, this is in School Messenger. I was like, what is that?
So my son had one class that that was their first night's homework. So it was to download the app, join the code, and the teacher's been giving them some quick PDFs and things through the app. So again, optional choice by a teacher.
Depends on the teacher. Some teachers are big into like Google Classroom.
Right, it depends on who's into what tech they're into.
I met with a world language teacher this morning. She uses it all the time. So again, it's kind of that mode that works best for them.
But even without Messenger, I'm thinking even just this app for them.
For the, for the, I would think that the SHS Daily Announcements would be really helpful because they're all there for folks.
Especially if you're going to get the athletic notifications or activities or whatever's going on in the building.
Yeah, we should do, we can do a follow-up.
Like maybe the connect classes?
Yes.
Right?
But that doesn't come up on to their, because last year, my daughter would still be able to get the daily announcements through the classroom.
Through, they do it through email. Yes, so we give it to them a couple of different ways, but I know that sometimes the mobile app is easier than going into their email and clicking through. Kind of extra steps for that.
As far as like coaches go, I mean, are we, because like, I, I think that that's where our biggest leak is as far as like how to connect to the kids in personal emails and personal cell phones. So this would be so great for that. So I'm hoping that the coaches will ask their athletes.
I know a bunch of the coaches were using Remind.
My son's on the crew team and I know the crew team is using it. They've all joined.
I know field tech he was doing.
Yep. So we've said to that, you know, this is, we went, I went to the coaches' meeting with Jeff Penny at the very, at the kickoff of the year. We did the training together and helped people get, and actually, they were some of the people that helped us to really test with students because it's hard to do some of these things when you don't have our kiddos here.
As a parent, I've got to say that, because I have three different schools, I thought it was awesome. So it was great, thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll continue to take feedback as we work to.
You're on your app?
Yeah. Well, because Remind, so when something comes through, my phone will just come up and say, notification came from somebody.
Get it tonight.
And I'm like, oh, all right, what do they want? Now, I do go to my email and look at it, but it's the app that told me.[1712.24]
Told you to go look.
There you go. There you go. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
All right. I used to go second during this report, but that was so great. I don't need mine being dropped. Oh, my God. So just three quick little snippets to give you a little bit of information about our new teachers, very little bit of information about enrollment as we ended the summer and showing you leading into what we'll do next month, and then just some of the highlights and upcoming work from my office. So we start with our new teacher. Are you operating?
I was Vanna.
Yeah. Obviously, we had just about 40 new teachers in on the last week of August with a wonderful couple of day presentation, and then they get a day to just kind of work and settle into their environment. We bring a number of people, including Maggie. Tyreshia Bachelor did a wonderful presentation. They get an entire presentation about special education, and they just get welcomed to Simsbury in a really high-energy way that we're pretty proud of. We, after a number of years, we think we're getting it just right, and we get really good feedback from our new teachers about it. Always highlighted by the end of the day tour, one where we take a bus around Simsbury and highlight all the cultural and cuisine choices that there are in the town of Simsbury. And.
I want in on that tour next year. Come on.
It's quite entertaining.
Make a note, I want to go on the tour.
Neil sits in the front, I sit in the back of the bus.
And we ended at Tolmido this year with a poor teenage kid who had his, his two partners had just taken their 20-minute break as we arrived. So Ms. Lumpy went to work.
Let's go.
Helping the kid out, and we got everybody served as quickly as we could. Thank you to Tolmido for hosting us. In terms of just some pie charts about the academic experience, the experience level and the academic preparation of our staff, you can see out of the new hires, about half were in what we call that novice portion of their career, first five years within the field of education. We tend to hire only a few who are sort of right out of college, but we hire quite a few who are a few years in, looking to make a jump to a district like ours. About 35% of them come in that next chunk of six to 10 years of experience and a smaller portion who are very experienced. But in this particular class, because we had some special ed department supervisors to hire, school psychologists, there were just some positions where we knew we were probably going to have to go hire on the experience level to find qualified people. In terms of their academic preparation, we're seeing more and more of our young folks already have kind of the master's degree when they come into the profession. It used to be that you could get your teaching job with your bachelor's degree and sort of spend your first four or five years getting your master's degree. More seem to have it now. You can see a little less than a quarter were bachelor's degree and about 40% with their master's degree and then others with more advanced degrees. Looking at student enrollment, the trend, not to be, not a surprise, as you've had a number of presentations on this, is that the elementary is the portion that is continuing to have an upward angle, and the high school over on the right-hand side of the page is the, the area right now on the curve, experience a decline in enrollment. So down 37 students at the high school from where we were at October 1 last year, but up almost 100 at the, the elementary level. So stayed, if you want to go to the next one, Sue, it stayed true to projections. I will give, I will give NESDEC credit. They got our projections darn good, within 12. We'll see where it lands on October 1st. The only, all the schools came in, a few students above projection, except one, and it's fortunate because the only one that came in below NESDEC's projections was Latimer. And that's a good thing for us right now. The more we can hold off until Latimer is completed with construction, the better off we're going to be. So as an overall increase of 39 students from a year ago, we did have to add three teachers to where we finished the budget season, just kind of hop to the cohorts and just the places where we were on the edge and people moved in. So no pattern to this. It was one, one at Latimer Lane, one at Squadron, and one at Tooton Hills. So it was in a variety of different parts of town. But two of those three were kindergarten. So we, we thought it might be another small kindergarten after, you'll remember last year, we had a very big kindergarten. And it, the kindergarten's decently sized again. So where we, where we were hoping to get away with one less kindergarten, we didn't get away with it. So that, that ended up being the trend at the end of the summer. And as always, a lot more on those numbers in October, my favorite report of the year.
You know, this is probably an October question, but I was just looking at this. So 93 more kids at the elementary. We added three sections. Did we budget flat going in? I can't remember. We didn't add elementary section.
We budgeted flat. Yeah.
So that makes sense. All right.
Can I piggyback on that, though? Just with a hundred, nearly 100, I'll round up, 100 in two years. Does that translate to roughly seven additional sections we've had to deal with?
Last year, we had to add, I think we did add four last year. I think it is seven. It's either six or seven. It's in that.
Yeah. Just want to make sure people understand that. That's, that's a.
Driver.
Implications to that, right?
Well, and.
Necessary, but I mean, it's.
And what I can tell you is after years of, the best examples are two of the schools, Tooton Hills and Central. For years, we've been dealing with, some grades have two sections and some grades have three in those schools, right? And we've been looking at the chart for years with that being the case. In both of those schools, all seven grades have three. All, like, so now it is, you know, it, it has kind of filled itself.
You have all fives at Squadron?
Not all fives, but we have a number of fives now, I think.
Really?
Yep.
Going back.
Yep, including the kindergarten.
You had six when your kids.
We did have, we were six, yeah. Every grade was six, except Katie's was five, and she was the small class.
Yeah. Kindergarten, we did have to add to a fifth. So we were hoping to get away with four again, and we didn't make it.
Okay.
So.
So space is getting tight at Squadron.
Yeah.
Well, that was one of the reasons why I wanted to ask that question. And, you know, we've talked about Latimer, but this is a much larger issue when you have just 100 in two years coming at the elementary level.
Right. Because we, right, we've shifted things around to accommodate.
Right.
Other things, and now we're, space is just getting tight, period.
And just very quickly, looking back on the past year and then forward again, looking at the, the past year, I'll go quickly because I don't want to spend too much time on it, but the work out of my office, out of the COVID mandates that we had, I think back to one year ago today, and we were trying to collect vaccine cards to do the mandatory governors, you know, and who was going to be able to apply for religious exemption or medical exemption. And that involved over 1,000 people that we had to be doing that with. And then, you know, the other parts of it have been managing absenteeism. When you tell people they can't come to work if they're sick, you have absenteeism issues that have to be dealt with, certainly on the staff side here and all the juggling that takes place with that. And then at one point in the middle of the year, I felt like an Amazon distribution center when test kits and getting everything out to the schools and doing that in a way. Now, believe it or not, we actually went through almost all of those test kits.
Really?
Yeah, they, we, our, our parents utilized them. We got a whole new batch in at the end of the summer. So I do want to say, if people need a test kit, ask your school nurse. There are now plenty again. But by the end of the year, we had really run through most of what we had been given by, by the state.
So that's where, that they are in school nurses' offices if anyone should need one in any building.
Yep, absolutely. Certainly already highlighted the Latimer Lane project, but last year, it was a really interesting process in the spring of design review and a lot of very engaging meetings with Mike Lozetti as the principal, Jason Casey and the design team. You know, when you're, when you're building something from scratch, it's kind of fun. There were some more mundane meetings, too, but the design review process was certainly a great one to be able to participate in. And then obviously, as I updated you earlier, we're in the middle of the bidding processes now. And then out of my office in terms of human resources, I wanted to highlight the continued emphasis on equity and diversity. Out of those 40 hires, we were able to bring some more people of color into the profession here in Simsbury. So we are diversifying our staff, and I continue to keep that as a priority as we are out searching for talent. Needless to say, it was a very active hiring season. And it's, and it's, again, managing those staff shortages, especially, you know, we're, we're thinking longer term about substitute teachers and how we need to manage that entire substitute everything. I mean, it's hard to find people who want to do that work right now, and that, that's not just true with us. It's true, we're, we're off to a good start for this year, but at some point, we'll struggle again, I imagine. So, so looking ahead to this year's priorities, Latimer will move into the bid openings, as I noted, will open, and then we're going to have kind of the public discussion about what we can and can't afford and hopefully, you know, be moving toward a final resolution of what the project's going to look like. And you can expect, we asked today, when will people start to see something happening? And it's, it's going to be right around Thanksgiving time that people will see the fencing and site work starting. So that, that'll be, we'll, we'll invite you to a shovel ceremony when it's, when the time comes. So.
We'll still have Election Day at Latimer Lane.
I don't.
November 8?
Uh, let's talk about that.
Talk about that?
Yeah. I think we don't, no, you can't, no, because we're using the Blue Gym for all the, yeah. So unless we use the cafeteria, that would not.
Which we used in the summer. We'll, we'll talk about that offline.
Okay.
I just thought this might, if we could, this would be a good place to let people know that.
Yeah.
We will keep everyone advised.
As Jeff pointed out, we are continuing to look at elementary space considerations. You know, obviously, well, when Latimer is complete, there, we will be able to achieve some relief in moving some programming around. But we did begin last year by, in a process where a couple of developments that we've talked about with Dorset Crossing and Cambridge Crossing, that we are kind of redistricting to Terriffill to try to relieve some of the crowding in.
Squadron.
In Squadron Line. And so that process is underway, and the gains from it will probably be seen in, not so much right now, but in the coming years to help alleviate what's, what's happening at Squadron. Under human resources, this has been on the strategic plan, and I'm really, it's just felt like the wrong time. So Sue highlighted the general climate survey. One of the goals of human resources has been to do a more comprehensive staff survey and get feedback literally about like the, the service people feel they get from individual departments, like the tech department and the custodial department and human resources and payroll. And, you know, are you satisfied with the kind of level of service that you're getting as a staff member in addition to the climate questions that we're asking? So hopefully, this will be the right year to get to that priority on the strategic plan. It's part of, I mean, it's one of the ones that I put in our premier workforce goal five years ago, and it's one that keeps kind of getting moved out another year. And I'm, continue to look for staffing efficiencies. You know, right now, it, it's quite hard to fill all our paraprofessional vacancies. And, you know, being able to say, you know, at what point is, is something going to need to be efficiency because we can't fill it, you know? And, and continue that conversation because it's becoming additionally challenging, again, not just for us. This is the, the theme. You've probably seen some of the articles in the newspapers about urban districts that haven't filled 200 positions here in Connecticut. Hartford was at that number, 200 certified positions they hadn't filled. And I don't know how you, how you operate like that, but, and then certainly responding to the job market, we do have lower wage positions, substitute teachers in some ways, but folks who work in our, some of our paraprofessional roles, some of our cafeteria roles. JR, in order to be competitive, has significantly by a percentage raised hourly rates for bus drivers in order. So those are all things we really need to be looking at in a more focused way than maybe we did five to seven years ago, just given where we are. And then, as noted, our biggest negotiations of the cycle, the teachers were in the middle of it. We started last Thursday night with the first session, and will carry through September and October. That is time-bound by the way the teacher negotiation statute works. So our mediation is scheduled for late October. Hopefully, we reach an agreement there because otherwise arbitration, which we've historically avoided, would have to be in early November. So hoping for a new three-year contract over the next couple of months. And then it's the year where that big one is followed by our second biggest one in the spring. So our secretaries and paraprofessionals are back up following the teachers in the spring. So it's a busy negotiating year and, but should be, you know, hopefully a successful one as we value the relationships we have with these groups. I mean, we cultivate a positive relationship with our bargaining groups and try to make sure that these processes are not ones where, you know, they're joint processes rather than adversarial processes. So that's what I had, and I want Jason to be able to.
Well, Jason.
Sure. I'm sorry.
No, for both of you, actually. I'm, I'm back to the Latimer Lane. I'm not looking to make work for anybody, but just thinking about Jason's pictures and, you know, and when are people going to see results? Is there a way to add a section to the website or to the app to, to show pictures and to, so, so people can, I figure the website probably is more accessible to, to the community members. I mean, so people can see where the tax dollars are going. Because I, I keep thinking about this as, this is an investment in our town, and that's tell the Board of Finance.
I think Mike Lozetti can't wait.
Yes.
I mean, Mike Lozetti wants to be the person.
Instagram feed.
Yeah.
Right. Like Scott did that with Henry James. He had a great Instagram feed, but if we could capture something like that.
Show the progression.
That's on the website.
Right. Again, broader than Instagram because not everybody in town has.
On the website, right. That we kind of parallel whatever that might be.
And I say that having no idea how much work that is to do that.
Because I just keep looking at Maggie. You know, parallel that. Would you just get that done?
Make it happen, Max.
Might be a good project for like one of the tech classes.
I'm like, opening bids and looking, it's fun work and people like to do it. So it, it feels like it's, you're showing off new stuff. And I know Mike kind of can't wait to be the, you know, Tom Crier to say, look at the great stuff going on at Latimer.
Right. But not everybody should have to find Mike on social, like a Latimer Lane on social media to see that, to your point.
Because this is going to follow up at some point with the next.
Maybe we have an under-construction page.
The next building, and people can say, oh, look what's happening here. Look how great it is. It kind of helps when, when we make the next ask.
Yeah.
Good for that.
Yeah, I like that.
All right. Neil, can I ask you a quick question? You mentioned the, the subs and the continual issues with finding subs. Last year, obviously, was also bus drivers. And you mentioned that JR raised the, the rates and any issues. I mean, we saw all the news with Mansfield having problems earlier. Just wanted, just wanted to.
We, we've been smooth.
Great.
And JR is bringing a couple more people on board. He's been able to, he had a real hard time last year providing, other than much later hours, just didn't have drivers to do the traditional athletic buses for Jeff Penny.
Yeah.
And he's able to get back to providing at least a couple.
Good.
And that's, so we're, positive signs, but he, you know, it's, it's, it's finding drivers. It's.
Is our bus ridership more back?
Oh, definitely more than the past two years.
Yeah. So are we having less parents driving their kids and more kids on the bus, I guess?
It's palpable at the elementary level. The principals all talk about it, like, there are definitely more kids taking the bus than the last two years.
Good.
There's a bachelor kid on the bus this time.
Oh, no.
What?
I don't usually do it. But my poor fourth child, hopefully he never watches the show.
Number four is on the bus.
Casey, it's about time.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. That's what, that's what Terrafill helped.
All right, Mr. Casey.
All right.
Sorry, we digress. So sorry.
Jason, do you want me to Vanna for you as well?
Um, sure.
Did that work?
Actually, I have the mouse too.
Go for it. You're on your own.
Okay. Actually, before I jump into the slides, I did have just one brief report, little housekeeping we have to do at the start of school. Which is the Fire Marshal annual inspections were completed at all seven schools prior to the start of school. So, and now my one hour slideshow.
I liked you so much before.
So funny.
And so we're looking at improvements over the summer, maintenance projects and some technology projects. At the high school, when you walk past the vending machines on your way in, what was formerly the assistant principal's office is now a suite for a student center as well as the new athletics offices. And I thought this one needed two slides because it came out so cool. So the assistant principals were moved into other locations such as the previous athletics office as well as into one of the library labs. So one of the computer labs in the library, this new wall was put in to divide and make two offices.
And where's, where's that?
So that's by the library. So that's Vanessa's office now.
It's by the library. Okay.
Oh, okay.
So if you walked into the library and took a left turn where that computer lab was.
Yep.
And I'll just talk about real quick, Jason, that space in the front. I don't know, Emily, if you've been in there, but that is being utilized at a high, high level. Like you go in there, free periods, kids are in there, after school congregating there and.
I heard they're not allowed in there during free periods. Don't you have to go in?
They have to, you have to go to one spot and only one spot unless you have a pass. But you are allowed in there in the library or in the cafeteria.
Thank you very much.
But not the cafeteria if it's the afternoon.
Right, only in the morning.
All right. Glad we straightened that up.
It's heated conversation about this.
Eating in the cafeteria?
But if you walk in and you're going to take a right towards the music room, it's on your left.
So as I said, this was a computer lab. And in the interest of reusing things, the furniture that was in that computer lab is now in the business lab to give that classroom space.
Oh, that was smart.
Also, the library received new carpeting. Maggie was instrumental in spearheading that. Spearheading the.
For a minute, I thought you were laying the carpet tile.
Ever now.
Coordinating a lot of books coming out, coming back. Over at Central Elementary School, we also took a space and built yet another wall and subdivided because we needed more office space. So this had been a, a custodial area that we turned into an office.
Where is that?
That was a storage closet. So if you start walking down the hallway to the gymnasium, this is on your left. And this is where our new department supervisor for special education is going to be as well as physical therapy, occupational therapy for Central. It's a beautiful space that they redid. It's amazing.
And here's another great makeover at the Squadron Line Gym. We now have a new floor.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. So that's really a community resource now. So that had been a tile floor for years that you could not utilize it really for sports. It's, it's full size width. You know what I mean? You can hold practices and this will really help the flow of, I think, getting some of the activity potentially out of
Wow.
The high school during the week and practices there, which will be good.
Well, and as you say, community, it's for community. So it's, so the whole community will be.
Huge safety improvement too, as a former principal in that school.
Does the wall, can the wall still go across?
Yeah.
Nice.
So you can still subdivide.
Yeah.
And it's the same type of poured floor that you see over at the high school.
Yeah, it's really nice.
That's great. That's great.
All right. And over at Terrafill, we have a new entrance. So Terrafill is our last school to get a security vestibule. So now all of our schools have a way to buzz in and be directed straight through the main office. It's no longer possible just to go directly into the school the minute the door is opened. So that finishes off our vestibule security project that's been going on for quite a while now.
Great.
All right. So jumping into the technology section of what went on this summer. We had our typical refresh of Chromebooks. So 700 of 850 Chromebooks were for students. Another 150 for staff and other areas came through. And that's a, that's a major distribution effort that sees Chromebooks getting moved into different areas based on age. And then as they age out, there's always a need for more. So we're in that cycle. Also, we extended our paper cut initiative. We did Terrafill during the year and now we've done Central, Tooten Hills and Squadron. This is the follow me printing idea where a teacher can print off a job and then walk up to a, say, copier in the library, swipe their fob and the job comes out. Getting away from that one inkjet printer in each classroom model, which is not very efficient. And this is really the way that other school districts have been doing this for years. So we're getting there and getting into that same technology.
Colleges do that too.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. And I just wanted to acknowledge the folks that had a lot to do with this summer's improvements. Maggie and the technology staff, as well as Andy O'Brien and the maintenance staff. Was a lot of work to make these accomplishments.
Jason, I would just add too, and I know the board's aware of this, you know, the line item we take this from is CNR, right? And it's a, it's a line item about a half million dollars that we also buy buses from. So we make those dollars go a long way. And in reality, it's a line item. And working with Amy now and even talking on the town side, we need to relook at with the needs of the building that there's got to be ways to move forward some more of these projects with larger dollar amounts while we plan capitalize too. Because we just can't keep up with challenges, but some great improvements this year.
Great job.
So the year ahead, my Latimer Lane renovation discussion, Neil, you stole my, all of my thunder.
To compare notes before.
That was a fail. So yeah, early procurement check. So yeah, the, the big takeaway is that November is going to be a busy month for the three boards. And we're going to get you a schedule very soon.
Thank you.
Really going to dig into it.
Great.
So the rest of these are the kinds of things I couldn't take a picture of because it's more of behind the scenes projects. So there has been steady work on things like bringing AC to the auditorium at the high school as well as finishing the remaining third floor classrooms. We are moving into an RFP phase in the very near future on that project. The bleachers, we have a tentative date for demolition on the end of November. So around the 21st of November with construction beginning in the spring. At Central and Terrafill, we have partial roof, roof replacements coming up. So there, an architect has been selected and we're working out the contract. So that construction is a summer project coming up. Tooten Hills Plumbing and Drainage Improvements, fairly large, uh, uh, large project at that school that's already begun in areas that don't impact instruction. So there's some basement work that's been going on behind the scenes and anticipating the completion of that over the course of the summer. And then lastly, there's just been other capital project research going on for the six-year plan. So things like the electrical work happening at Central, also high school and Henry James Sports Facilities, fields, tennis courts. These are all things we're looking at, thinking about and going to be talking more about in budget season.
Great. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of course.
Only if it's about Latimer Lane. He needs a little attention.
And you, your quota right tonight. I feel like I should know this question, but like on the Chromebooks, when they go through their life, let's say those 750 Chromebooks, whatever, whatever the life is, I don't know if this question for Mrs. Seidel or Jason, but like what happens when they're done, when they're at their end of their life? What, do we trade them in? Do we use them as bookstop or doorstops?
The answer, as, as any good technology person will tell you is it depends. So at the high school, for instance, they'll go through four years with one student and take a fair amount of abuse. And then that student has the option to take them out of the system and away they go. With Chromebooks, Google has a date set that they'll no longer receive updates and they'll no longer potentially function the way they used to function. So we're always mindful of what's called an AUP date for Google. So depending on where they are, if it's in the middle school or elementary schools, how they're progressing through that process. Once they do hit the end of that, they need to be refreshed. We do have an absolutely absurd spreadsheet that's color coded to show at the end of this year that these, this cohort of Chromebooks, if you will, move into this grade level. At the end of that year, they move into that grade level. So really depending on where they started is how they age out.
No, I think at the, so at the very end though, there's no, no more place to go. Google can't update them. Do they, can we trade them back in? Can we, for the bottle deposit, I mean, anything? I mean, do we, or do, what do we like?
We actually have a trade-in policy with the parts supplier that we have. So we get dollars that directly take money off of the bills we, we spend on, on getting replacement parts.
Perfect.
We also started a return process for any seniors who wanted to donate them back because we use them as loaners. So what we do is we provide a loaner device in every grade, every classroom in grades four through eight. So that if a child forgets a Chromebook, there's a classroom loaner in the classroom for them. So that's how we also utilize some of our aging out ones. It's just a background.
All right.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, we are on to our second public audience. Anybody would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road in Simsbury. And I didn't actually have anything to say, but in listening, I just wanted to make a couple of comments since we're starting out the beginning of the year. In Mrs. Seidel's presentation, I was really happy to see that the app is going to be usable on both phones and on the Chromebooks. And I'll just take this opportunity because it reminded me that while my sophomore now does have a phone, I was one of the tough holdouts in Simsbury whose freshmen did not have a phone for more than half of the year. And it was tough as a parent to hold to that because he would go to class and there were things that they needed to do in class on their phone with the assumption that every student had a phone. And mine didn't, mostly because I had an age at which they were going to get a phone. In some cases, it's, you know, because students can't afford a phone that, or they weren't, they lost one or it broke. So if the teachers would also be mindful that not every student does have a phone. I know it's rare, but it shouldn't be assumed. And this was a good opportunity to mention that. So it's great that it's also available on, on the Chromebooks. The other thing I just wanted to mention because it reminded me tonight was it's sort of an observation and sort of a question because I don't really know if you can do this. But I'm go, I'm going to use an example from tonight, but it's really a general overview. When the board members give committee reports or activity recaps that, that take place not at these meetings. If possible, it would be really helpful to get a few more specific details instead of super broad generalizations about what was discussed in the committee meetings. I watched some meetings back over the summer and committee reports often say, we met, we discussed, a lot of great things are going on. But the public doesn't hear the details. Maybe they're going to hear them later. I don't know. But as one example, and by no means the only one, reports about CAE and NSBA. In my notes from tonight and from past meetings read, we had lots of leadership. Dr. Cardone spoke, our agenda is going forward, our legislative activities are going forward. I did hear that the sky is not the limit is the commissioner's message and that we're dealing with social and emotional issues post-COVID. And that there's a lot going around, a lot going on around the state and around the country. But there are no specifics about what those legislative priorities are and how those align with our district. I'm not sure people are aware that those are specifically advocacy and lobbying groups in which our board has membership. And it would be very helpful to know as parents about what position the board is taking on these issues and the position those associations take and how those align with our district. So just sort of looking for a little more specifics in the meetings.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else? All right. With that, we do need to enter into executive session. So can I get a motion? I need a motion for that. Yes, Katie?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session to speak about a student matter.
And a land acquisition.
Acquisition.
Potential land acquisition. And a second, Brian seconded. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next Board of Ed meeting will be Tuesday, September 27th at Simsbury High School in D172. So anybody who would like to join us, we'll see you at the high school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Emily, thanks for coming.